Hello. Hello, hello. Hi, everybody. Good evening. We're gonna have all this meeting for order. Kind of free ride west coast.
Hi. My pleasure is Chris Black in the United States of America and to the Republic which stands my nation under God. He does what will do the justice for our life.
Good evening, everybody. Let me do a roll call of the committee.
Mr. Robate, Mr. Andrew Naftis there. Mr. Bell, Mr. Delquillo. Mr. Donovan, here. Ferrandino, here. Ms. Keith, here. Mr. Bezuti, here. This stuff. You have a call, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided by a formal meeting. Annual notice was sent to the record newspaper, conference clerk, post in the lobby at Navo in Bordeaux, setting forth some scheduled meeting and public meeting with the board. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming down to ours tonight. We had, like we said, we had to open up the meeting tonight formally. We posted for it, if you can ask for the non-action meeting. We're gonna go over the process really quick and basically turn it over to the public. Have you asked any questions that you would like to ask for this, for this search? We also have a superintendent search email, which we sent out as a message. If anyone isn't able to come tonight, they can email any questions from now until the search ends with questions they would like to ask us or ask, we will ask our interview. There's a few questions that some people already sent, and there are actually a bunch of them I will bring to the interview process. The committee is gonna be Mr. Ferrandino, Mr. Donovan, Ms. Keith, and myself. And Mr. Bezuti will fill in, and I can't make it to any of the actual interviews. The posting closes this Sunday. The committee will meet on Thursday, the 20th. We are ready to start receiving applicants, and we are gonna start interviews immediately. And then we will narrow it down to at least three candidates, which we will bring to the whole board to select from there. So, other than that, that is going to be the process. Three, as Ms. Keith mentioned at our last meeting, three of us are, were on the previous search committee when we found Mr. Greco. So I am confident we'll find another great candidate to bring forward to the Linners. So, so this time, if anybody would like to come forward and ask any questions?
Where is it posted for the superintendent search? Like, you said you all got applicants?
It was in the record, and it's on the ledger.
It was on the ledger, posted on NJ.com, the job board.
NJ school jobs?
Uh, yes, that's what I'm thinking.
I think so. I don't wanna say independently, because when you buy the ad for NJ.com, they go to all their subsidiary postings. But I'm almost positive, once you link the ad, it links into the job post.
Gotcha. And then is there a feedback, like, would Harris, like, a lot of school districts use like AppleTrack as a common one, so we know, like, a lot of districts may use that? Is there any way, like, Linners could possibly transition to job postings through AppleTrack? I know a lot of younger people, people from college, not aware, go through, uh, to find jobs, that that's a need, or something?
AppleTrack is a great system. I don't know that, I'm sorry, I'm Dennis McKeever on Board Attorney. AppleTrack is used in a lot of districts for the ease of accessing, calling the resumes. You know, like anything, it comes with a cost, and I think the board would have to assess whether their HR department benefit from having AppleTrack is, it's widely used, and I agree. Typically, when you're doing a superintendent search, though, you're not gonna use an AppleTrack, you're gonna do a more official posting and try and hit a wider range of applicants throughout the, you know, the state. So, but no, it's a good point, and I just wanted to say that superintendent searches are typically not done through an AppleTrack. It's typically done through, you know, more official advertisement processes.
That's certain. A couple of questions for you guys. The only question is, I know State Monarch, Tommy, you had a role, had to play the role in discussing what you do. How many roles did you play in the position of superintendent?
I would say probably just the salary, about it.
Uh, second question, I had, I know there are a few local applicants, people who have, I shouldn't say, I don't know if a lot of, people who have their superintendent certificates who work locally. Are those people gonna be on the list you know so far, or is there that, that's not considered?
Yeah, we're aware that there's, there are, there are people who are certificated and may be applying for the job. Once we close out the applications, we're going to then have a, I think Chris said now a committee meeting to review all the applications. But we're very much aware that there's a local, there are local applicants, or local individuals who may be qualified with the right certificates to take the position.
Okay, and then just one last question. It's something I asked last meeting, actually. I didn't want to be untrue or something, but what I asked at the last meeting, on the meeting was, it was, and another value of your ability, where you were, you know, to call the candidates, if you are in the past, or someone's, or, 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 that's what I asked. Question I asked, though, like, how are we gonna keep these people under that, that is my real concern? I mean, getting great people is just hard enough, keeping them seems to be even harder thing. Is that something that's been discussed and considered, or is that under something you can keep your ability control?
Typically, someone here obviously is our number one option, you know, of course, but there's so many factors that come into play that, you know, are out of our control, you know? Yeah, you're right.
We had also contracted with Mr. Greco, a five-year contract after his first two years. Initially, we brought him on with a three-year contract, and we renegotiated and had a five-year in place after that. So our intent was to keep this contract. And I think it's a good question to understand, you know, what we're up against and how we can keep them, because obviously, you know, unfortunately, a contract alone doesn't do it.
And the contracts are capped, as you're probably aware. Under the accountability rates, you can only do a five-year contract.
So, um, just off the whole agenda, now, do you have, as an interview, just to kind of, why people leave, or why they would choose, I'm just curious, do you have the preliminary? Do you have the type of interview as well?
Well, I, I personally stood with Mr. Greco, and I, and I did, some of board members might have had a phone call conversation, but I don't know if it's, you know, so, yeah.
Just, just, I mean, just along with this question, just kind of understand what are those factors in trying to be, I mean, sometimes it can be personal, right? Other times, it can not. But it's just to kind of understand how we actually keep, like, good people in this room, so.
That's a good question, how you do it.
But that's the last of the deal, if you have to have an interview.
I mean, you look, and, I mean, Darius just brought a point, two very good superintendents. How many were there in the past 10 years?
Uh, the new one, the fifth, within a year or so.
Yeah, and he, Dennis, maybe, out there. Would we say the time horizon of superintendents? What's the average time horizon of superintendent candidate history? Oh, if you, geez, I tell you, the northern church, you're, you're, what's the normal? If you can get two contracts out of superintendent, you're probably pretty good in this day and age, unfortunately. And in my view, again, this isn't about my pedagogical view, but in my view, stability at the, in leadership is critical. I think it can be felt throughout the whole district when you have stability. And that's what I think all districts strive for. The problem is, a governor ago, you know, there were caps put in on superintendent salaries, and that made the superintendent position a mobile position, a position that didn't typically move weight. People were losing money, as it were, when they were capped in their salary. The caps are now gone, but the caps on the length of time are still there. So you can only do a five-year, a three- to five-year contract, which, you know, when a board may wanna commit to a superintendent on a long term, it becomes somewhat problematic. And the other thing that happened, after Governor Christie wrote the, the caps, it kind of reset the salary range as well. So when you might wanna, you know, pull salary for one, you got, we say, you thought there were no caps, it got reset in the industry. But I'll tell you, before Governor Christie was there, and Darius might be able to agree with me on this one, but your superintendents, when they got to that spot, they were there, that there was stability, and they'd stayed there for a long time. That was a great thing, I think it was a great thing. When the caps came in, it just became a thing where superintendents were bouncing around between districts, typically trying to get to be from a K8 or a K6 to a big K12, because the salaries went up when you went out with the student population. When you had more students, you got more money. Simple as that. And I think it got reset. If you can get two contracts out of a superintendent, I think that's great. If you get to three, you're probably at the high end of the scale at this point, where you get somebody in for 10 years. I, I don't, you know, I, it's hard to see that right now. I mean, I, quite frankly, I think in public, you know, Fort LeBurg County District set a superintendent for three years, three contracts, I believe, but he's gonna retire, and it's gonna be like his ninth year, when they try to re-opt and renegotiate. So it is becoming a mobile position, which I think is a detriment to districts, to teaching staffs, to this community.
Thank you. If you're gonna lose schools, it's a plan. So I asked that to my, I was like, I've a board, okay, so I have a board, what are you looking for in our next superintendent? Because what's your vision, and basically, you know, Mr. Greco was great, so like, how can we do better and talk back? So what's your vision to this next person?
Oh, I know for one is to improve in some of our reading issues that we have. I know our readers, our reading levels are a little low, and that, so just to keep Mr. Greco and help improve those, and just to continue improving them, but just continuing where we can go in the right direction. And also, we, we want stability as well, you know, and as, as Mr. Keith said, it's hard today with the superintendent becoming mobile to keep somebody around for a long time. So we're gonna be looking to keep somebody here, you know, for at least several years, which is not more, you know, a couple of contracts, you like it, like, what else?
We need something that's gonna work well with us, obviously. Our book of dialogue was great with Mr. Greco. We probably spoke to him daily, I think, multiple times. We want someone that's gonna be able to work with a teacher here, and a teacher, maybe somebody that came up super thanks. You know, it's, it's gonna be hard to replace Mr. Greco, I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. And, you know, to get back to the point, we, we met with him, and, you know, it was personal, it was a personal choice that he made. He didn't point to any specific reason. It was just a, it was just, you were shutting down. An accumulation of, of everything. It was a terrible year and a half, and, you know, it's just unfortunate.
Yeah, and obviously, this year's Mardi Gras is another thing that's gonna be an added thing to see where our national superintendent can help us with that, but, yeah.
I think one of the things also is, three years ago, we weren't, our district was in a horrible position. And now we're, you know, we're in a better position, and I think of the board, now that we're healthier, now that the district is healthier financially, among many other ways too, we're looking for someone who can lead us to that next step, and to take it to the next level. You know, you see that we have a new middle school, we're improving the buildings, you know, I know, being on the board, this is now my fourth year, you know, we have so many issues that now it would be great, we can start focusing on the district as a whole, and, and the education and the students. I feel as if there's a lot in the way, and that maybe now we can really get to the heart of what, what we're all here to do. So that, that's sort of what I think we all, and if I'm wrong, we may, we may, I think that's where we kind of all are. That I think, you know, I think it's very unfortunate for losing Mr. Greco. I really enjoyed working with him, I think he'd be wonderful for our district, but at the same time now, it's like, all right, well, there's an open field, and the field is healthy, let's play ball, let's see what we can get. And I think there's a lot of opportunity, hopefully, out there. And one of the reasons why we're doing the process is to see what the market is now compared to what it was three years ago.
Yep, we're definitely in a better place, you know, financially, you know, three years ago. A lot of improvements. The other thing, we were fortunate with the past two superintendents, they had one thing in common, a few things in common, but what got big was, they really didn't settle for mediocre, if you see them. They were always for shooting for high standing, and I would love to see somebody like that again, come in and pick up right where they came off. A planner, somebody that, that's gonna be enthusiastic of reaching for the stars and not settling for mediocre enough. Hope that trickles, I hope that becomes infectious within the whole vision.
And a lot's gonna come into play, too, when we interview, what their vision is, what their, what their plan is, but, you know, it's not just what they've done, and where they see, what, what potential do they see with us? Can, can this person raise the, the expectations of our staff to get more, you know, not that they're not great, but get more out of them, and just bring everybody up to a new level, so.
Um, I have a question. So, is the performance of the superintendent major every year? And you discuss that, any performance every year? As I know, as I know, you know, like, our performance are, probably ended up, is, um, may not be as good as some other districts around the district, so, like, what do you look for in the next superintendents in order to help, in order to get a better performance, in order to get a better performance for our district?
There is a performance report that we do every year as a board member of the superintendent. I don't know, they're all public, they're not public. So there is, we do do them every year, they do by July 1st every year. So we do do performance reports. That's an internal, board internal report, that gets filed, that will be in these personal, personal files, but they're not public knowledge. If you're saying, do we see the other superintendents, you're saying? Performance reports?
Uh, like, do you just review it? Do you?
Yes, we do, internally, yeah.
Yeah, but like, compare our math and meetings to other districts here, and where like, they're linked, be, of, or, really? So is there something, kind of, looking in this new candidate?
Yeah, we want them to constantly improve where Mr. Greco is now, and keep bringing us forward to the next level, and improve every year, and bring us much better than where we are today.
But I think any candidate that's coming to the table can look at, like, the performance reports from the district that they get, they should become into the table and being able to analyze our performance report, and be, and be able to come and say, hey, this is what I think. But they need to sell us, and, and to say, well, this is how I would do this, this is how I would up your, your rating. So I think we're excited to find out how, how some of these candidates look at us, and what ideas they're bringing to the table to help improve our performance rating.
Thank you. Our next, next question is, how is Linners superintendent's level compared to others around our district? Are we the iron, or the floor, or the average?
We're, oh, we're accurate. You're, you're in the, I mean, there are, you're in the middle, I'll put it that way. It's tough to judge, because you're a K12 district that doesn't have the student population that, say, are bigger, or Fort Lee does, okay? Those, those two districts are, you know, maybe 4,000 and 6,000 students respectively. But you are, you know, you're multiple schools, you're big, you're decent-sized K12, and you are paying medium to well, is what I would say, almost like a safe, you're, you're in the middle, maybe just above.
And then what's the basic requirement? I think we talked about refer, and then what's the basic requirement that you set for the next superintendent?
We're looking for, well, just so you're clear, superintendent is required to have a certificate issued by the state of New Jersey. So, you know, on a, on a basic level, we, we were looking for a chief school administrator, certificated individual, who has preferred experience in a role, an upper-level management role of a school district. That's, that was from the posting, I don't have it actually at my fingertips, I thought I did, but I don't have it at my fingertips. Oh, you have it. Oh, great. So certificate, certificate of eligibility, five years of my experience as a superintendent, and/or building principal, classroom teaching experience, and we are looking to have an earned doctorate as a desirable, not mandatory.
Um, I just kind of like asked, especially in the comment, so like, how, so like, asked what we're looking for, and then I think somebody responded, like, to work well with you guys and, like, the teachers, you mean, and stuff? Is there a way we can ensure, like, a little bit more consistency amongst all the schools with the new superintendent? Is that, like, gonna be the thought or the plan? I know this year, like, you all said it was crazy, but I know, like, with the press, everything's kind of been, like, separate, but just have a little bit more unity between the superintendent versus the administration, because that does trickle down at the teacher level as well?
Fifth point, I heard, as far as, I mean, is this an actual course meeting, or is this a superintendent search meeting? You mean, is it an actual meeting?
It is an actual.
It's an actual meeting, guys.
Okay, so I'm sure, with your example, you have a search video on.
We have to post it as a meeting, because we have a forum, the non-action meeting.
There's no official action, I mean, the purpose is to have sort of a forum, but it's an official meeting.
One other point, I think, is for you to take, to build the, the consistency.
Yeah, I think that was like a question, or, 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 I was like, I don't, I was like, I don't, and then it's all right. Sorry, guys.
It's there with an asterisk.
This is a, like, I think that's important from, like, law level, or size of, maybe, especially because it's all new this year, we're, like, coming together just to create a little bit more unanimity, but I think we're probably.
So, this is mine, right there. So I have a daughter in the lower elementary school, and the last year, it was wearing the disparity of differences that were happening, like, at Washington versus Franklin, and all of that, so how can you do, if you would read it, and ask her? Um, so I have two more questions. Um, are you, would you consider looking to promote someone within the district if you have applicants coming in?
We'll consider it. Well, we will consider if they apply, of course.
Okay, okay, this is, this is, this is a, this is a, I wasn't sure that I was going. So, okay, and then the last one, um, so you have your committee, like, the three or four of you, I think you have, uh, two hundred and thirty. And I just wanted to know, I think it would happen to be making us for us to be able to ask questions, but would you actually interview this superintendent, will it just be the three or four of you, or would you consider having different stakeholders, like, maybe, like, another administrator, like, another teacher, or like, a parent or two, just to ask questions that maybe you may not consider, they would consider?
So, I mean, I think it's definitely a consideration, however, we have a situation of timing, of getting, you know, we wanna fulfill the position for June 30th, and in order to hire somebody, and that person didn't know this, if they're working somewhere else, the binder came tonight, the posting closed, we didn't really get to see what's in there. It closes Sunday, if, when we meet on the 20th, I think if we can glaringly see that it's out of, let's say, if there's 20, if maybe 10 are great that we can go with, and we could fit in, you know, a process, you know?
No, no, it's good, it's good.
You laugh, because I was saying that a lot.
I, I, that's definitely something we would love to consider, and we will consider if we can fit the timing in, even if it's maybe in between us and then before we get to the board, but I, I don't wanna really commit to it yet, because, again, it depends on how many, I mean, we interviewed, we're, I think, we're two weeks behind from three years ago.
We're eleven.
And we interviewed 11, 12?
12, we had 12 full-time, right, positions, and two interns.
I mean, we, we were there, you know, not for, I mean, but we were there, you know, Saturdays, three, four days.
Eric, no, I'm sorry, Eric's right, because Eric came in two weeks into the committee, because another committee member couldn't, uh, continue on the committee.
So to answer your question, yes, we want to, and if you can just give us another week or so to maybe confirm that.
Well, I believe that you already have applicants, so there you go.
Well, we do. I have to say, we do, we have a few already, and it hasn't closed yet, so it'll probably, hopefully, grow by a few. So, in, in a perfect world, we would have loved to have, you know, a long process, and it's, you know, stakeholders, teachers, parents, and stuff, it's the timing part, so. We will try.
You know, Mr. you let myself a bowl, teachers, interns, at the same time, so you can't convert.
Yeah, no, listen, point made, understood, you guys, you know, so.
Need your information, Mr. Greco?
Same, right? Yeah, no, thank you.
All right, um, I have several things I want to ask and talk about. Um, when you're talking about your timeline of hiring, clearly you wanna have a seamless transition between Mr. Greco with name coming. Um, if the people that you have in your binder don't really pan out in terms of, like, wow, it's good on paper, but when we brought them in, it was like, whoa, not so good, um, would you name an intern? Um, or would you go super, I mean, I don't know how long you're allowed to go without a superintendent in charge, or without naming an intern? Um, you know, of course, like, you can't ask somebody who's into the district to act as a superintendent without their consent, right, or apply to the position, I think that's a lot of what people are applying on. Um, being in Bergen County, I've been educated for 25 years, this is what's going on on Lower Tonnee County. The Montessantos are a thing of the past at the longevity in, in the district, that's just what's happening. And I think, like, what you said, that's actually the truth. It may be disappointing, but that's the reality of education. I mean, assume you're talking about teacher shortages, the colleges are, like, the scholarships are giving away to colleges, for kids to enroll in teacher programs. There's a sub shortage, things like that. So how, how, I think those are important questions to ask on the interview. I also think that perhaps to ask a staff member from each building, or, you know, to submit a question that they may have, and they get doubled, you know, with the things, and I would like to see what that part that candidate has to answer. I'd also like to see from your administrators to ask the question, possibly the PGA presidents to pull their memberships to come up with something, to see how that person asks, could answer these questions. Personally, my district, which is very vast, we have, um, people who have disciplines who are never in the classroom as administrators, and it's interesting to see how they're morning the show, because they never were in, in the classroom. And things that they take are great, which are, are really not quite as important as other things. Um, and you talked about curriculum and reading, which is always gonna be the pace for our, I just hope some, I know, like, as teachers, we stress out about testing, but for parents, and now, the same idea, the testing really is not a good indication, because if you're looking from year to year, you also have to look at the cohort of groups who's testing. My favorite, um, convocation that I ever attended was, we had a woman come and speak to the staff, and it was like the best thing she ever said, you know, in, in business, or any job, if the person's not doing the best, they get fired. Teachers can't fire students. And she made an analogy to blueberries. You can buy a garden of blueberries, some are delicious, sweet, tart, and some are squishy and gross, but we still have to teach all of them. We can't teach up any blueberry, we have to teach them. And I think that's something that we have to really look at. One thing that's apparent in the district, and things that I experienced, is the lack of differentiation. One thing as a parent in the district and things that I experienced is the lack of differentiated instruction and knowledge of how to execute that. And that's what's coming, and kids are more and more included, and, you know, it's very costly to run specialized programs, and, you know, that's another thing I have a bit concerned about, is how, you know, provide services for these kids and not cut corners and make sure we do a really good job, not only for the gen ed kids, but for the other kids, and create dynamic programs, you know, facilities like this. Bringing the community into buildings, I think is a very important thing, to have the buildings open up to the community for events, not just for rental spaces, but for events. Uh, I've actually printed the, um, district goals that Mr. Greco had in the last couple years, obviously, not all of them are fulfilled because of COVID, but I pretty much checked off a lot that I were, that I was aware of, and obviously, other things were internal. Um, you know, I think that Windhurst is continuously going through a lot of changes, demographically, environmentally, um, and how it affects the community. Um, I think it's a very nice town, I think the people are great, they really care, um, but I also want to see more of the education being important, instead of always pointing out the things that are quote-unquote wrong or bad, um, instead of like trying to say, hey, how can I help or volunteer? I think the volunteering is, um, lacking in certain respects, it's always the same people doing the volunteering, uh, like, maybe as a whole, bring speakers in that are dynamic, work with the, um, Greco department, say, hey, can you suspend your sport tonight and have your parents show up and things like that? Those incentives are really crucial. The other thing is, I was reviewing, um, one of the board policies, so it was passed in twenty-fourteen, and it maybe didn't come up in, in the policy to be reviewed as of yet, was about, um, conducting like, um, let's see here, it's policy zero-one-three-four, district policy, board self-evaluation. I know it's mentioned that several board members are missing, but this, I think, is crucial, um, conduct, um, so it, it talks about self-evaluation and the relationship of the board with the superintendent. In the last couple of months, I saw more silly scrutiny publicly, um, of things that were very, um, inflammatory, I think, to the parents. Um, I found it very disturbing personally, and I did vocalize that many, many times, and I, I will continue to do so if necessary. And it's not to, um, to cause any chaos, such as just for people and their perspective, like, you're talking to people who are not in the business of education and you're scaring them, um, and, and saying things that are just unnecessary, um, in my opinion. I know you guys mentioned they talked to Mr. Greco, um, for various reasons, uh, is that, was that considered an exit interview?
No.
Okay, will you conduct an exit interview? And maybe perhaps get some feedback on him, what he was seeing and thinking, a plan to do, and possibly have the next superintendent look into those things? Thank you.
No, thank you.
Um, in the event that, the county office will require us to have a certificated superintendent in place in the event that this process doesn't run as forced in an appropriate fashion, uh, not in appropriate fashion, but we don't have a superintendent that's ready and going. Uh, can we use, uh, an in-house person to perform the duties of an intern or an acting? We can. Uh, can we hire an intern or, uh, from the outside to perform the duties? We can. Um, you know, can we, you know, like I said, we can expand the duties of existing personnel in order to, to ensure that we're compliant with the, with the law that we would have a certificated chief school administrator here in Fisher. And, um, I think the committee is aware of that, but to your question, if that, if we end up in that space, which we, since, you know, the committee, I would say we don't want to be there, but if we end up in that space, you know, there, we, we would have to hustle and make sure that we had an intern in place.
Is there a timeline, is there an interim, how long they can stay in that position?
An interim can stay in the position for two years, um, and if they, if they're retired personnel, Darius, then they might end up with a pension problem, um, so, um, but this process underway, and if we ended up there, I, I would hope that we wouldn't be doing it for much, you know, for an extended period of time.
Anybody else have any other questions? So we do have just sort of a note, like I said before, we do have the superintendent's search email, if you think of anything between now, and we're gonna keep it open while we interview as well. Um, you know, I will send any questions you still have, we'll get back to you, or, you know, if you have any questions that we, you know, we're gonna let you know what we're gonna do with the stakeholder part, but we'll also take these questions if we can and bring them to our interviews, I know I will add them to our, on our list, and I'll share with the, with the committee, the few that came in today, they started to come in today, so, um, a lot of great questions to ask, um, in addition to the ones that I.